Push the button. Everybody good? All right, please join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Here.
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 All right, thank you. All right, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed say no. Motion for the consent agenda? Second. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed say no. All right. Citizen comments, nobody's contacted me, but the floor is open. All right. And... Dr. Husken.
All right.
The floor is yours ma'am.
All right. Well, good evening everyone, and we are excited to be here at Sinai Elementary School. Thank you to Mr. Russell and faculty and staff and our, the PTO here at Sinai for all of the lovely fall decorations and the refreshments and just the warm welcome we received. It's always great to be out in a school tonight, so this is just fantastic. Thanks to everyone who's joining us virtually at home tonight, so we're just really excited to be here. And mainly tonight, our thoughts and prayers go out to everyone who is just recently surviving all of this crazy weather. All of our friends here in Virginia and southwest Virginia, western North Carolina, or, you know, you all know I especially have a connection in Asheville, and just now in Florida. We're just so just thinking about those folks. And again, all the folks that are trying to figure school out, we just can't imagine what that would be like. So again, we're just thinking about what can we do? And so just, just keep those folks in your thoughts and prayers, and they're all trying to figure out a path forward. So just want to, just really put that on your heart tonight. So, tonight guys, I want to spend just a few moments talking about our, our elementary folks especially. We're here in an elementary school, it's a fitting night to talk about the Virginia Literacy Act. That's kind of been on everybody's mind since school opened. We've been getting ready for it for the last couple of years, but tonight, we're really, let's talk about it for just a second. Everybody is, has been sort of faced with the challenges. If you've got a little person in your life, it's coming home to you every night. But we just are, just want to talk about it a little bit and maybe celebrate just a few of the good things about it. We've heard about the challenges, but let's, let's celebrate a few of the good things about it. The governor, when he first came into office, he, he looked at everything and he said, "Let's, let's look at literacy." So, let's talk about some of the best practices and how we just want to continue to just look at everything, look at the data very closely, and know that it's not unique to Halifax. This is going on across the state, and know that, okay, we, we want to be very clear. We don't teach curriculum, we teach children. And please know that we are going to continue to get our teachers in the room, we're going to continue to listen, we're going to continue to talk about everything, and we're just going to continue to work hard. And we're not afraid of working hard, we're not afraid of, of trying new things, and we're not afraid of moving forward. And so some of the things that, that we've seen, just doing walkthroughs and being in classrooms, here's, let's talk about some of the good things, because we've heard, yeah, this is, this is a challenge, and this is a heavy lift. But let's talk about what is going well. Just this week, kindergartners reading whole books in October. That's a big deal. I've seen second graders, they're spelling, they are spelling very big words and writing whole sentences. They're doing things that, that are ahead of the game. And a lot of children are doing these things. We're seeing fourth graders, some people have said, "Oh, where's the creativity? They're not doing the fun things, they're not doing this." Okay, so I walked in a fourth grade classroom last week, and they're putting on a play, and they're doing the parts, and they're reading all of the, they're making all the voices, and they're doing, they're doing all the literary components. So, it's still there, it's just being done differently, and it's kind of mired in the newness. So, let's kind of dig deep, and let's kind of look in and know that it's there. And it's, when you're tired and you're hung up in some of the hard work, it's kind of hard to see it. But when, when you're looking for it, it's there. And our kids are learning. And I, I get it guys, I get it. So, so let's celebrate, let's make sure we celebrate. And someone said this to me the other day, and, and it kind of washed over me. And if you guys can just take a minute to find joy in the journey, just find a minute to find joy in the journey with the children as we're going through these challenges. It's there, and they're learning, and we'll get there, I promise. And I see you, I see you doing it. And I'm, I'm proud of you guys, you're doing it, I promise. It is, the needle is moving. And thank you. Hear me say it, hear your principals say it. They're sitting right here, they're smiling, they're smiling, they're in there with you, they're in the trenches with you, okay? Students, parents, every night, I get it, you have all this work, they're bringing it home. Teachers, your principals, everybody. I get it. Ms. Miller, Ms. Davis at Central Office, I get it. Everybody. We'll keep doing the lift, and we'll get there. Promise. And, and just remember this guys, there are many, many ways to enlarge your world, but a love of books is the best of all. And that's from Jackie Kennedy. So, thanks guys.
Thank you, Dr. Husken, for those comments. I'd like to echo what you said. Thanks to Sinai for hosting us tonight. We have mics that relatively work somewhat well, so, so added bonus. Yeah. So, the school year for me is moving along rapidly. I don't know if some of our teachers in the, in, in the audience tonight feel the same way, but it sure feels that way to me. As Dr. Husken said, I'm hearing a lot of success stories coming out of our classrooms, a lot of good things happening in our schools. Mr. Maraska's here, he's going to tell us some good things, I believe, on their high school construction project tonight. A lot, a lot of great things going on in Halifax County. Fall sports are underway. Some sports are even starting to wrap up. I wanted to bring your attention to Tuesday, the high school, middle school team wrapped up their season, an undefeated season. That's impressive. However, the Lions also went undefeated in 2021, 2022, 2023, and those are the years that we could easily get our hands on. I didn't want to work Mr. Powell too hard, I told him that was good enough. So, congratulations to Coach Payne, or Bucky as he's known, and Coach Graham for another outstanding year. The high school golf team season ended last week at the subregional tournament on October 1st. The Comets won the district this year to go along with district titles in 2014, 2015, 2016, 2019, 2021, 2022, and 2023. Congratulations to the entire team on another great year. Congratulations to Coach Lacks and Coach Perkins as well. While the team season ended, individually, senior Lucas Newton continues to qualify for events. This past Monday, Lucas shot 69. Mr. Clay, you've hit a golf ball before, 69, pretty good score? Pretty good, okay. Shot 69 to qualify for the state tournament, which will be held in Harrisonburg this coming Monday. Great playing, Lucas. Congratulations on an outstanding year, and best of luck Monday. A district, a state title would look really, really good in Halifax County. Mr. Lloyd, you have anything?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Williams.
Good evening. Dr. Husken, Chairman Mason, Vice Chairman Lloyd, and all other school board members. Students at Halifax County High School have had a great second month of school and are continuing to build dreams together. Students have been involved in many clubs, sports, and activities to show their Comet pride. Our volleyball and golf teams have both been successful this year, and our volleyball team plans to continue picking up wins until the conclusion of their season. Our Blue Comet cross-country team have continued to be successful at their meets and are striving to be triumphant at their regional meet on November 5th. The Halifax County JV football team is continuing to work hard to pick up their first win, while our varsity football team was victorious against the Bassett Bengals and gained their first win of the season. The volleyball cheerleading team have kept rooting for them, along with the Comet crazies in the student section. Our scholastic bowl team has continued practicing and will have a mock match against teachers today to practice their competition strategies. All of the clubs at Halifax County High School are busy planning events to fundraise and get students involved. Our student council association is excited for homecoming next week and is planning various spirit days to get students excited for the football game. They're also looking forward to the homecoming dance, which has a theme of golden opulence. Yovisso held a distracted drive-in simulator today and allowed students to see the effects of texting and driving in a safe and controlled environment. They are currently raising funds to have a guest speaker come speak to students. Our hosta club has planned many events for the upcoming month and are fundraising for various activities throughout the year. They will be participating in Lights for Hope again this year and have been, began planning their scene. FBLA is still holding meetings and encouraging students to join. Dr. Husken met with a group of 12th through, 9th through 12th grade students to form a committee to help solve issues pertaining to our school. This committee is called Our School, Our Voice, and encourages students to share their unique point of view with their peers, teachers, administrators, and Dr. Husken. It is evident that students at Halifax County High School are flourishing and have continued to strive to be the best students that they can be. October is full of new opportunities to succeed, and our Blue Comets are ready to seize everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job as always. Board member committee reports, safety, school safety committee, I don't have a name. Okay, Ms. Runyon, okay, she's not with us. They met on the 23rd of September, 26th, the wellness committee met. Do you have an update for us, Ms. Comer?
So, I think Mr. Davis is going to talk a little bit more about that, but I'll go ahead and announce this is on here. So, we are trying to bring something called Rev Your Bev to all of our schools. So, what it is, is, it'll be, excuse me, my voice is trying to vacate me for some reason. It'll be different water coolers and things all around the schools where students can go fill up their water. It'll be flavored water, they're providing all of the water bottles, it's costing the school absolutely nothing. But it's going to be a good way for us to promote healthy drinking water, good hydration stations, and it'll provide them access to be able to have water throughout the day. So, they'll have the water bottles, they'll, they do like contests where they can decorate them, so they can personalize them, just to ensure that students realize how important drinking water is and staying hydrated. So, really excited for that, and it's not going to cost the school system anything at all. All of this is provided. We actually got to watch a presentation that was done, that was given to us, but it was by students. And you could see how much passion they have about how this has changed, like the way they understand about drinking juices and soft drinks versus how good water actually is for you, how better it's made them feel, all the things. So, I'm very excited to see that go, and I think Mr. Davis has got a little bitty blurb about that for a policy update when it comes his turn, and he'll talk a little bit more about that then, if he don't mind.
All right. Thank you for that update. The finance committee met today. Mr. Clay, you hot off your presses, got anything to add?
No, we just went over the current bills, the current revenues and expenditures. We did discuss ESSA funds and spending it down, and it's my understanding we've got four new buses out of this, which is, which is good.
Yep, all right, great. Yes. Ms. Hake, sorry.
Yeah, the homework committee met on October 2nd with Mrs. Miller, and we reviewed the parent survey results, and next we talked about perspectives from different stakeholders in the room, and we went around the room, just as teachers and admin and parents and all that. I think overall it was positive, you know, homework is a good thing overall, and we need to challenge our students. It just, sometimes how, and I think the problem areas are being addressed, and it, and then we had open discussion time, and a lot of good things are happening, like the in-school homework lab at the high school. We also talked about a possible fall survey for elementary schools as a possibility. Yeah, that's, that's all, thanks.
Thank you. Didn't overlook you, that wasn't on my notes, but that's okay. No, I appreciate that update. Thank you. Dr. Husken? Do you have an award? I think so. Well, I didn't know about the homework committee, there may be others that I don't know about. Mr. Maraska?
It's been a wet month, but if you recall, at the beginning of the project, we set a priority of installing the steel decking. In doing so, we protected most of the interior of the building from most of the rain. So, while we were not able to get a lot of site work done because of the mud, we did make some good progress inside the building. Progress we've done, we are finishing up the steel decking. That will actually be completed this week. The roofing is continuing over the classroom wings right now. It's already completed over the auditorium and the gymnasiums. We're, we're building out the kitchen walls in the interior, and we're actually pulling wires through those, through the rough end right now. We have continued with the building interior walls and cha, and we've got to the point where we can install the chase walls now. We've got all the plumbing, not the fixtures, but the holders, the racks that the plumbing fixtures get mounted to, those are all installed, so now we can create the chase walls. We've continued installing drywall, HVAC components in the classroom wings. Once we get the roof completely on, we will hit that full force. We're continuing the overhead duct work, domestic water and hydraulic piping in the CTE area and in the auditorium. We poured the concrete generator pad, slab on grade in the kitchen area, and all of the second floor, except the auditorium mezzanine has concrete on, it's complete. And we've also poured stairs four and five in the gymnasium area. That's, those are the two southern stairs, so all three stairs around the gymnasium are now installed and poured. Brick installation, as you probably noticed, it's been continuing around the building at a good pace. We were grading out the loading dock starting today. We've had a painter on site, he's continued spraying the block filler all over the building. We finalized the gym striping layout with, with the athletics director, so now we can pull the trigger on issuing that purchase order and get our gym flooring ordered. And we will be dismantling the crane next week. That, and so in two weeks, it won't be there anymore. We don't, we have no need for that heavy equipment anymore, because we are done with steel. And the classroom test furniture, that's going to be swapped out next Monday. Middle school, high school, high school, middle school. And there is a live survey that students and, and parents and teachers can fill out. And the cafeteria furnitures met with us and the facilities committee on September 26th. Purchase update, not much has changed here. We have, we are finalizing the CTE equipment right now, and we're finalizing the cafeteria furniture, and we should finalize the color selection for the primary colors. That will unlock all these things for us to go ahead and pull the trigger on purchasing your flooring, your bleachers, all that stuff that requires your colors. So, there's the stairs in the gym area, that's one of the stairs, that's the southwest side of the gym's stair court. And you can see the man right there is, he's putting on the block filler, that again, that's like primer, it fills in the whole porous block, so the paint actually gets and sticks to the exterior of the face. And here's the concrete in area C. This is taken from upstairs, right outside the gym, and on the left, we're straight across right there, that's your second deck of the auditorium, goes in the, messing with the auditorium. Over the side there on the right, that is overlooking your cafeteria area. So, on the left right there, if you walk all the way down that area, right now, that's what, and you turn back and look at it where we just were, the auditorium is now on your right, and the caf, you're overlooking the cafeteria on your left. Now, if you turn around 180, that's what the picture on the right is. That's your admin, that's the admin area for the second floor. That's the current status of the auditorium. You see, they got most of the steel installed in there, and they're starting to grade it out for the, for the, I wouldn't call it a pit, but a little depression for the seating. And there's a view overlooking the cafeteria. This, this is taken last week before we poured it. As you can see, then the rain did not really affect us that much because we had the decking in there, so the gravel was just fine when we came to pour the slab. And this is actually taken this morning. We poured half of that slab this morning, it's about 140 cubic yards. That's a good amount. So, that is complete, and we are pouring that, everything you see in blue, it's, it's giving preparation for that, that concrete to be poured. We're pouring that next Tuesday and then Thursday. And here's just a photo of where the progress on the brick was as of late last week. You can see they're coming around on the auditorium right now. And here's a few aerials also. This is looking from, right there is the south wing or B wing of the building. You can see all the decking is installed, all, all in the main area and over all the floors. And you can see the roofing progressing right there. That's a white TPO roof. This is exactly the opposite side. This is A wing that you're looking at, or the north side, this is north facing south. Again, you can see the roofers, we actually got an extra crew of roofers out for us, and that way we can hit this hard and fast, and we can get the roofing on there as fast as possible. And the last photo here, I know it's a little dark in this bottom there with the shadow, but that is the front of your building. You see, so you get the idea of exactly what it's going to look like now, when it all comes together. There's, that's all going to be glass on the front, curtain wall glass on the front. And I believe that's what I have for you tonight.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Maraska? No? Appreciate that. Thanks for the update. Thank you. Dr. Hawks?
Good evening, Chairman Mason, Vice Chair Lloyd, and board members. Tonight, we are presenting to you the final SOL data along with our state accreditation ratings. Let's begin with the most exciting news. All of our schools are accredited. As you can see here, we do have two schools that are accredited with conditions, but again, all schools are accredited. That's the message we want to hear. So, accredited with conditions does mean that we, school has one or more of the school quality indicators at a level three. And if you want to see more with the school quality profiles, you can go to the Virginia Department of Education's website and search by the district or by each school, and you can see what all that entails with the school quality profiles. Tonight, we're just going to take a look at each of the content areas, and I'm going to begin with reading. With accreditation, the state allows growth to go into our reading scores. And here you can see by school, three years' worth of growth. We have the 21, 22 school year, 22, 23, 23, 24 school year, and we're going to follow these colors throughout each content area tonight. As you look at the reading with growth, you can see that most of our schools did improve, while some dropped slightly. This does vary year to year, given the student population. So, you can expect that sometimes, to see a dip based on the student population and the different needs of the students. I would like to point out specifically on this slide though, Sinai Elementary, for their huge increase in reading this past school year, as you can see on the graph, they went from 68% pass rate to 87% pass rate, which is a huge, huge increase. We're so proud of our Sinai Eagles, and we're here celebrating them at their own building tonight, so I'm excited about that. Next, we're going to take a look at our growth in math. Again, we can see that we have improvement in some schools and some drops in others, as you look across. Specifically, we want to look at South Boston. We see a huge increase in our scores at South Boston from last school year. They went from 67% to 81% in math. That is a huge accomplishment. Yay, South Boston, Roadrunners. Next, we're going to take a look at science. And while science does not allow for growth, science allows for us to do expedited retakes if a student scores between 375 and 399. However, it is important to note that unlike reading and math, science at the elementary schools is only tested in grade five, and at the middle school, it's only tested in grade eight. So, you have one grade level carrying all of those schools. In science, we did see an increase in scores at Sinai Elementary, South Boston Elementary, and at Halifax County High School. So, we are still continuing to work on science. The instruction department has provided a lot of hands-on materials for the schools to use for science experiments and things, that we're hoping to make science come alive and continue to see our scores increase in science. Congratulations to those schools who showed growth in science as well. Now, we'll take a look at history. And while history does not actually go into the current state accreditation process, we still do test in, in history. Like science, history does not allow for growth, but it does allow for retakes if a student scores between 375 and 399. At the elementary level, again, one grade level carries the score for history, and that's grade four with Virginia Studies. And at Halifax County Middle School, it's grade seven with civics. In history, we did see some increases at Clay's Mill, Cluster Springs, South Boston, and at the middle school. Again, Again, history is an area of concern that we're continuing to work in across the board. Currently, there's another component of accreditation and that's attendance. If you recall, last time, we talked about that chronic absenteeism is defined as missing ten percent or more of the academic school year for any reason. No matter if it's excused, unexcused, suspensions or whatever. And with your typical one hundred and eighty uh school day year, that means eighteen days is considered, considered chronic absenteeism if a student misses eighteen days or more. In almost every school, our chronic absenteeism has improved. And in many schools, it has improved drastically. Please take a note from last year to this year, specifically at Sinai Elementary and South Boston Elementary. This is one of those charts, we don't want to see the numbers go up, we want to see the numbers go down. So we're glad to see the bars showing lower to the right, that's what we want to see. Again, congratulations to our schools for the improvements that we did see with attendance. All of our schools, our administration, our staff are continuing to implement creative ways to encourage student attendance and to reward students for having good attendance. We are so proud of the accomplishments that our administration, staff and students had for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year and we are looking forward to seeing more continued success in the spring with our twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hawks. Dr. Buckley?
Good evening. Uh Board Chair, Mr. Mason and Board Members and Dr. Huskin. Tonight, we're going over um the athletic facilities planning timeline. And we're bringing this to you tonight so you can see what progress we've been making towards our um objective, excuse me, our objectives on looking at phase two of the high school uh construction. Next slide please. So our current objectives, as you recall, on September sixteenth, um a motion was passed for beginning of an RFP for renovation of structures and fields, so that we could get an idea from um area vendors what it would cost if we were to go down the rev- uh renovation road. So currently, we're working on um a draft. We got notification that Region Eight is going to have a training seminar tomorrow on school construction procurement. So we kind of are pausing where we are in the process so that we can attend that. We want to make sure that we're following the Virginia Procurement Act from A to Z on all aspects of this construction project. And as we're moving forward, we are still asking Grimmon Parker and um Shaki to refine the value engineering of the, I'm sorry, it's just Grimmon Parker, um of what they have already presented thus far. Next slide. So the procurement procs- process as we know it, you currently take and identify your project, but you have to go through all specifications. And there are educational specifications and construction specifications. So we know that we have to meet the VDOE specifications and they have a hefty handbook on that. Um once you've identified all your specs, then you can start drafting your RFP. So that's, that's kind of where we are now, we've identified specs, we've, coaches have been pulled in. Um and we're now needing to look at the RFP of how we want that constructed and what all should be included. Following, putting out an RFP before it is even bitted on, you then have to have a mandatory construction meeting onsite with all vendors that are interested. And from there, they have a time that they're allowed to ask questions. And if one asks, all get the same answers, so you share the question and the answers. Then you will have a proposal deadline where all vendors must submit. If anyone is late, they're discounted. Uh if they don't show up to the mandatory meeting, they are discounted, meaning they cannot put in a proposal. Once the deadline has come, then you set a date for evaluation of all proposals. Then you can do a round of interviews from the top number uh vendors that you're looking at to seal a proposal with. The thing about an RFP is it allows for negotiation, it allows for um more conversation than just a construction bid. A construction bid is the lowest price wins, but the RFP is the ideal way to go. Um there, then from there, you make your final selection and you just start your contract process from there. So what are our next steps? Our next steps, like I just said, are to attend a meeting tomorrow so that we are clear on all the new laws that passed on July first of twenty twenty-four. So there are three distinct laws that passed and all three have to do with procurement of construction in school divisions. Um and I want to get more information on those so that we are clear. Next, we will finalize our educational specifications. Because we are a school division, we can't only focus on the sports aspect. We have to incorporate all of the um PE, physical education aspects that must go with our fields in order to be supported by any funds by the VDOE. Um and then we will apply what we have learned from the meetings to continue the draft process for the RFP and present it to the facilities committee at that time. So what I need for tonight is a date to be set for a November work session where we can bring all this information back to the board and um discuss our next steps. So if the board can look at their calendars for November, then we can hopefully set a date and a time to come back together.
Dr. Buckley?
Yes.
Is that the same meeting that we are going to write an RFP with?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yes, but she's going to have the skeleton ready with all the right laws and all the things, so it'll be ready.
Would the seventh or the eighth of November by chance work for anybody?
Seventh looks good for me. And we're talking starting at eight thirty and going until?
The desire of the board.
Okay. Eighth is better. Ms. Hicks has eighth look.
What time?
Uh start at eight thirty?
A.M.
Eight, yes ma'am.
Yes, good.
Nine, would nine work? All right, well, let's look at thirteen, fourteenth, fifteenth. That's the following week.
I'm good with the fourteenth or fifteenth either, those two days are fine.
Good, fifteenth good, fifteenth good, start at nine o'clock on the fifteenth.
That's wonderful, thank you. Did anyone have any questions?
Yeah, any questions? No?
Thank you.
Nine o'clock. You're welcome, Ms. Mallon.
Will we meet in um Superintendent's conference room?
In the conference room, yes.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Buckley, Mr. Davis.
Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, excuse, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, School Board Members, Dr. Huskins, uh good evening. Uh including your packet are the August two thousand twenty-four VSBA policy updates. Uh as I shared last month, there was only a total of six and basically that's um, the changes are hemming around the editorial changes from the Code of Virginia. So I asked um if you would approve these uh policy updates, so we can include them in a policy manual.
Everybody had a chance to review those, we get a motion?
Yeah, I move that we approve them.
Excuse me?
I move we approve them.
Thank you, sorry.
I'll second it.
All right, any discussion? All in favor of approving, approving the policies as presented, say aye. Aye, opposed, say no. Thank you, thank you. Mr. Neal?
Good evening, Dr. Huskin, Chairman Mason, Vice Chair Lloyd and the rest of the School Board. I bring to you a couple of policy uh pay table updates uh for your consideration and approval. Uh the first is something that's uh bringing back to you again um regarding our high school athletic director uh pay table. And you, I've shared this, we've shared this with you before. And as your request, um we brought a number of surrounding counties of Region Eight, the uh, the athletic director pay tables for surrounding counties. And the last time we met, it was requested that we, that we bring additional uh surrounding county pay tables. And uh so we've, we've gotten several here for you. So the proposed athletic director pay table has not changed since our last meeting. And that you stood on the fall right and we've got several others uh for your request. So we're requesting that the twenty-four, twenty-five proposed Halifax County uh high school athletic director pay table be adjusted for this example.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Neal? No, Ms. Comer, go.
Thank you for going through all the trouble to do some deep digging into this to, to give us a broader picture of what's going on. I appreciate that very much. Um I know this is probably the third, second or third time now that we've kind of deep dived into this. So I make a motion that we approve the um athletic director pay tables as it's presented.
Second.
All right, motion and a second, any discussion?
I have a question.
Uh Ms. Hicks?
Yeah, uh for my reference, um Halifax County, how does that compare to Appomattox, Lynchburg and Pennsylvania? Because I see that we're higher than those, are they, are the, do they have less students in those counties that they're in charge of?
Yes, the ones you mentioned did. And if you'll notice, uh some of them do, this one does start higher than some, but if you scroll down, you'll notice ours tops out at a considerably less, lower amount than, than the others.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion, yeah, Ms. Lloyd?
Uh so, Mr. Neal, so when, if I'm looking at this correctly, and um so basically, i- if approved, we would have in Halifax County, our starting pay would be basically, I'm sorry, I'm scrolling back and forth, they are uh comparable to step eight, step seven, step, step eight from Lynchburg City. Is, is that, is that the way I'm, am I reading that correctly?
Yes.
And significantly more than Appomattox, significantly more than Pennsylvania County. So the only one that technically we would be behind, that we can see the full scale, would be Mecklenburg County. I mean, based on that, so I, I don't know, I, I guess when I look at what I assume would be um revenue brackets for Lynchburg City versus what they would be in Halifax County as far as pay tables. I would assume that normally Lynchburg City would be much higher than, than Halifax County. I, I don't know that, but that's my presumption. So I, I was just pointing that out, basically.
Ms. Clay?
I also like to point out, Putzaminy County has four schools. And you do the total math on each athletic director. Dan River, I might, three schools, is it four? Dan River, Chatham, Gretna, so they got three schools, no, Tostel, Tostel has four schools. City of Lynchburg has two schools. So we have one. So if you want to do the comparison, compare the total amount that you're spending. We have spent way too much time on this. It is embarrassing that we keep going through this over and over and over. This needs to be done, needs to be over with, we need to move on from this.
Anyone else? Mr. Lloyd?
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't disagree with you, Ms. Clay, that we spent a lot of time on this and that we've um, that we've kicked it around. Um I, I guess where you may disagree would be on with the appropriate action would be in response in order to finalize it. I guess that's where we may, may vary.
So, so, so you're dealing, you're dealing with two A schools in Pennsylvania County and we're a four A school. We're also dealing with the three A school in the city of Lynchburg and we're a four A school. We have one high school. You know, if you got people through the system, and, and, and this is one thing that I'm, and you'll come to find out when I'm, I'm here. Our people need to be supported. I- if they do the job, they need to be recognized, they need to be paid. Our teachers, our staff, our principals, our athletic directors, across the board. Something's not right, we need to adjust it. My issue here is, you got Pennsylvania County with four schools at whatever the starting pay is. Do that math. That's a whole lot more than I started paying with one school. So they're paying the athletic director, director, directors, four times sixty-two thousand, it's two hundred and forty-eight thousand. Look at Campbell County, Campbell County has William Campbell, Brookville, Rustberg, Alta Vista, four schools. I mean, I, I, I think, I think, well, you know, for the hours, I mean, even yourself has talked about the hours he spends. Any A.D., I, I know Mr. Lawler, I, he was well underpaid, I, I mean, I, I just, you know, I just can't understand why we're spending so much time on this.
Yeah, it, it is the third time that we've addressed this, so any other discussion, that we got a motion, we got a second, anyone else? All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, say no. Motion carried, Ms. Rice? Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Neal.
The second item is regarding transportation. Uh there's been some discussion about our, our car driver, uh daily rates, not having different steps. So as you can see, we, we bring this before you tonight with the adjusted steps, very similar to bus drivers. Up to this point, car drivers did not have steps based on their years of experience. So this is an adjustment based on years of experience. And you see on the left, uh the N County or, and we have Chase City, Dammel, Beres and Lynchburg. That part didn't change, but there, there was one daily rate for, for our car drivers and we've adjusted it to have steps similar to bus drivers.
Was that a question that I, I posed to you that came from someone months ago?
Yes.
Okay. Never mind, thank you, Ms. Comer.
I move we approve the updates.
I'll second that.
All right, we got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, say no. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir. Uh tonight, I, I come before you just to share some information um regarding um cellphone policy or cellphone free education. Uh and of course, uh we know this is pursuant to the Executive Order thirty-three. Um first one I'm going to do, just kind of give a brief, brief overview of what the executive order is. Uh then we'll move forward with the um proposed changes. Um just to start off, I wanted to give a timeline of how all this started from beginning to end. So just bear with me, on July ninth, two thousand twenty-four, Governor Youngkin issued Executive Order thirty-three, establishing cellphone free education in public schools to promote the health and safety of Virginia's K, K through twelve students. On August the fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four, draft guidance was issued by VDOE for review and feedback uh through September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Listing sessions were conducted throughout the Commonwealth, close to six thousand public comments were received by VDOE. September the sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four, the final guidance was distributed to all Virginia public school divisions. And by January one, two thousand twenty-five, all school divisions are required to create or revise policies that adhere to the final guidance. Uh just to give us a little understanding of what the definitions are um and some of the, the areas. Uh, just to give us a little understanding of what the definitions are, um, and some of the, the areas. Bell to bell, uh, this is when the first bell rings at the start of the day, uh, to begin instructional time until the dismissal bell rings at the end to the academic day. This includes lunch and time in between class periods of class changes. Cellphone-free education, the appropriate, the age-appropriate elimination or restriction of cellphones and other personal electronic communication devices in public schools. Cellphone, a personal device capable of making calls, transmitting pictures or video, or sending or receiving messages through electronic means. The definition of cellphone is inclusive of a non-smartphone that is limited to making phone calls or text messages. A smartphone that encompasses the above features and other feature personal electronic communication devices with the above-mentioned characteristics. Instructional time, uh, any structured or unstructured learning experiences that occur from when the first bell rings as the start of the school day until the dismissal, dismissal bell rings at the end of the academic school day. Personal electronic communication device, any personal device capable of connecting to a smartphone, the internet, a cellular or Wi-Fi network, or directly connects to another similar device. Personal electronic communication devices may include some wearable devices such as smartwatches, as well as personal headphones, laptops, tablets, and other future personal electronic communication devices with the above-mentioned characteristics. Stored, a cellphone or personal electronic communication device not being carried on the student's person, including not in the student's pockets. Storage options include, but are not limited to, in the student's backpack, in the student's locker, in a locked pouch, or in a designated place in the classroom. The expectations. First, we'll go through the elementary, uh, expectations, um, by the, uh, executive order. Cellphones and personal electronic communication devices will not be used by elementary students within the school building or on school grounds. Students must use school-based communication tools and platforms, whether in the office, classroom, or other centralized location, to communicate non-emergency needs with parents. Parents and educators should use the school-based communication tools and cha-and channels to communicate emergencies and non-emergencies during bell-to-bell instructional time. It is encouraged to have a school official available to support the student in the event of communication involving a family emergency. For the middle school, students should not have a cellphone or personal electronic communication device during the bell-to-bell school day. If cellphones or personal electronic communication devices are brought to school, they must be stored and turned off during the bell-to-bell school day. Students must use school-based communication tools and platforms, whether in the office, classroom, or other centralized locations, to communicate non-emergency needs with parents. Parents and educators should use school-based communication tools and channels to communicate emergencies and non-emergencies during bell-to-bell instruction. It is encouraged to have a school official available to support the student in the event of communication involving a family emergency. Educators and all co-curricular and extracurricular sponsors must use non-social media-based apps for communications with students regarding activity and athletic scheduling, scheduling information during school hours. Following the high school, students should not have a cellphone or personal electronic communication device during the bell-to-bell school day. If cellphones or personal electronic communication devices are brought to school, they must be stored and turned off during the bell-to-bell school day. Outside of the bell-to-bell instructional time, cellphones and personal electronic devices may be used on a high school campus before or after school. Students must use school-based communication tools and platforms, whether in the office, classroom, or other centralized location, to, to communicate non-emergency needs with parents. During bell-to-bell instructional time, students must use school-based communication tools. Parents and educators should use school-based communication tools and channels to communicate emergencies and non-emergencies during bell-to-bell instructional time. It is encouraged to have a school official available to support the student in the event of communication involving a family emergency. Educators and all co-curricular and extracurricular sponsors must use non-social media-based apps to communicate activity and athletic scheduling information with students during school hours. And last, a final note, uh, if a high school student travels to a different campus or facility during the school day, they must adhere to that building's policy and procedures for cellphones and personal electronic communication devices. Exemptions, students with individual, individualized education plans or IEPs or Section five oh four plans may be allowed to use cellphones if the IEP or five oh four plan specifies the need for such use. allowable exemptions for cellphones and personal electronic communication devices must be written in, into the five oh four IEP and/or individualized healthcare plans. All individualized healthcare plans that include cellphone or personal electronic communication device usage must be approved by the school nurse coordinator, director of special education services, or the superintendent designated. So next is neighboring school divisions. I kind of wanted to find out what our neighbors are doing regarding the cellphone policy. Uh, so Appomattox, uh, cellphone usage is not allowed during instructional school day. Campbell County, um, they shared they'll be following the executive order. Charlotte County, uh, this matter will be reviewed in November. Danville City, uh, cellphone usage is not allowed during instructional day. And Danville City are one that are using the, uh, the locked pouches, um, for their students. Mecklenburg County, following the executive order, will be reviewed this month. And Pennsylvania County, cellphone u-usage not allowed during their school instructional day. Which brings me to the proposed policy revision. Um, uh, this is policy IIBA, GAB, acceptable computer system use.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Oh, you got more? Sorry?
So this is the revision, um, that would, um, have, make Halifax County schools in compliance with the executive order thirty-three. Uh, cellphones, personal electronic communication device, um, and I'm going to read this again because some of this I've already read before, but I wanted to make sure I verbalize this information. Uh, use of electronic devices, including cellphones, in schools must adhere to the following guidelines. Elementary students are not allowed to use cellphones or personal electronic communication devices within the school building or on school grounds. Middle school students are not allowed to use cellphones or personal, uh, electronic communication devices during the school day. High school students are not allowed to use cellphones or personal electronic communication devices during the school day. Students are allowed to use cellphones or personal electronic communication devices on HCPS buses, as long as they are adhering to the bus rules. Uh, no picture-taking, no sharing of devices, viewing of inappropriate content, use of sound without earbuds, headphones, and et cetera. The privilege of any student using his or her cellphone on the school bus may be suspended if he or she violates the cellphone, personal electronic communication rules. Middle and high school students are allowed to use cellphones, personal electronic communication devices when traveling on HCPS buses to and from field trips, if allowed by the supervising school staff member. Teachers, coaches, sponsors, and other school staff must use non-social media-based apps for communication with students regarding activity and athletic scheduling information during school hours. Students who need to contact their parents for emergency purposes will be able to use the phone in the main office of each school. Parents who need to provide their students with time-sensitive information will be able to call the main office of their child's school, and a message will be delivered to the student. Students with individualized education plans, IEPs, or Section five oh four plans may be allowed to use cellphones if their IEP or five oh four specifies the need for such use. Uh, Mr. Chair, this is the proposed revised policy for HCPS, and I would, um, ask for a motion to approve this to be added to our policy.
All right, thank you for that explanation overview, Mr. Davis. Ms. Lloyd?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I would ask that, that we table this until the November meeting. Typically, when we receive policy, we have time to review it, digest it, um, seek, uh, the opinions of our constituents, um, talk to other people as well, just to see what we want to do. We typically don't receive the policy and approve the policy at the same meeting.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Comer?
So my only question with that, Mr. Lloyd, is that this is a governor mandate. I do not believe that in any capacity we can not follow what the mandate is. So I don't know that reviewing it any further is going to change anything. Um, so I'm going to make the motion that we approve it as it is now. I mean, we need to give our teachers time to prepare for this, this change and adjustment and enforcement and all those things. So I make the motion that we approve this policy as it's written now.
I second that.
Got a motion and a second. And Ms. Outwell, some discussion?
Yeah, I would, I would actually also prefer to wait. Um, I, I might have missed it earlier. If I, if I did, I apologize. But when I looked through earlier, this wasn't there for us to review before the meeting. My personal opinion as a parent, I want my kids to be able to have it. Executive order is pretty clear, um, whether I agree with it or not. Um, but what we have to do as a board is determine how we write it in our policy so that it's clear for our students, for our staff, and for our, um, our students. If I look at the policy and I'm just quickly reading through it, the fourth bullet says students are allowed to use cellphones on the buses. And then down below it, it says middle and high school students are allowed to use them on the buses. Uh, I would like to have an opportunity to review the policy. I've also been reviewing some of the other schools. The VDOE is, is posting their policies, um, that they receive from the different school systems out there. Um, and some of the verbiage that they have in, in those policies, I think, are really helpful. Um, I, I would appreciate the opportunity to, to make sure we have a clear policy that we are giving out to them.
Ms. Hicks, I believe was first, then, Mr. Clay?
Yeah, I've always been for stricter policies, so I appreciate the executive order. I sat through the VSBA training for this, so I've read this a couple of times. Um, they made a point that kids are literally addicted to their cellphones. They get over two hundred mess, two hundred alerts on average per hour. That is a lot. Um, I know adults are in that, but we're talking about kids right now. We have a, a problem, um, and it's going to be hard to enforce. I understand that. We're going to need a lot of communication to the parents, um, to coaches who text their kids for, uh, after-school activities, but during the day, we're going to need a lot of communication to the students in school. So how do we advertise that? I've seen some slogans like "up and away during the day" or "away during the day." You know, posters, a lot of emails and communication to parents too, because they're texting their kids during the day to see how they're doing. But the communication lines go through the office. Um, and so they had a lot of good ways to do that in the presentation I sat through. So I, I, I think that's not policy, of course. That's how you enforce the policy. Um, and we're going to have to support a lot, a lot of the school admin. Um, but my question is, what would happen if they do get caught with their cellphone during the day? If this, in, um, because the executive order is they can't have it from bell-to-bell. So a teacher catches their student with a cellphone, sort of, what is the protocol?
Well, that information is, will be outlined in the code of conduct with, um, Mr. Lewis and his, and his team. They're going to be reviewing it to make sure whatever is in the policy will be mirrored in, uh, code of conduct, the high school handbook, as well as, um, the middle school handbook.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Clay?
Um, this, this policy that we have in front of us, uh, Mr. Davis, wh-where did you get this policy from? Who, who wrote this policy?
From the information, um, uh, out of the, uh, executive order.
Out of the executive order?
Yes.
All right, so that was pretty much probably some attorneys involved in this? If you had to guess? I'm, I'm just asking.
More than likely, yes.
All right, I guess the second thing is, um, enforcing this policy is going to be tough for the teachers and administrators right out of the gate, right?
Sure.
Um, so with that being said, if this policy gets approved tonight, I mean, they need some adjustment. I mean, we just can't expect these principals to be just cellphone police right out of the gate. I mean, they need to adjust along with the teachers, right?
Correct.
Okay, that's all I have. Thanks.
I'll let you go first. Mr. Lloyd?
Ms. Six actually stated some of my concerns that I plan to bring up is that, you know, basically now as a board, who our, our primary mission is to drive policy. I mean, that's, uh, uh, our primary task. We're looking at approving a policy, not knowing what, okay, well, I mean, to me, when you write a policy, the first thing you do is, what happens if a person doesn't follow the policy? I mean, that's, that's your next step, your next logical step. We don't have any of that. We don't have any of that information in front of us. So, um, none of us had the opportunity to review this prior to walking in here tonight. I'm, I'm well aware of the governor's executive order. I'm also well aware of, um, not in the distant past where we chose to ignore executive orders as a board when a lot of us didn't, uh, uh, agree with doing it at that time either. But, um, I just think as a, as a board, it's only fair to have the opportunity to review, um, adequate review before we offer approval on any policy that would be put in place, especially one that affects every family that comes through here, um, and largely affects those who have, you know, high school students. I've, I have asked a few parents, you know, as we hear, to talk about the executive order. And I've yet to hear one parent who's in favor of not having the ability to communicate with their child during the, um, day. I mean, I think our current policy is strong. We said you can't have it during instructional time, um, and, and we carefully crafted that over several revisions to get it to the point where, where it is strong. So, um, I, I, I don't think that currently we're asking teachers not to allow children to have access to their cellphones during the, uh, during instructional time. So if this policy does pass in November, if it was tabled, it's not a big leap to go from not having it at all during instructional time to not having it at all, uh, from bell-to-bell. So I don't think the challenge to the teachers will be as gra-as great as it may be, um, commented on or represented earlier by some of the other members. I think that's a, that's a small step. So I would just ask for time for us to at least review this and get, um, the opinions from our constituents.
I would echo what Ms. Hicks said about our kids being on these devices far, far, uh, too much and, and too often currently, and many adults too, but we can't do a lot about that. Um, this, um, mandate has been in the works for a while. Uh, I have heard from many people in District Four that are certainly in favor of this and think that these devices are certainly a distraction to learning and in the classroom. Uh, ran into a good friend of mine, um, over the weekend. I'll tie this all into, to a cellphone, I promise. Him and his kids moved to a huge school district in Georgia. Uh, they love the area. Um, I said, "How are your kids adjusting?" He said, "It's tough." He said, "My kids are personable." He said, "But nobody in that school knows that their new student's there, because everybody's walking around just like this." So, uh, again, this mandate's been going on for a while, um, has been out there for a while. Uh, I think we've had some good discussion, but, uh, Ms. Outwell?
Yeah, can you, um, clarify? I know the, the policy on here is saying during the school day. Um, the VDOE model guidance, um, described it as bell-to-bell. Can you explain why, why we chose to use during the school day instead of bell-to-bell?
Which one of you?
All of them, the policy.
Well, the school day, I mean, it's, it's basically the same thing, bell-to-bell is from the time they walk into the building to the time they leave. And the school day is the time they walk in the building. The instructional day is when they walk in the building, the first bell rings until the end of the day.
Okay, so it wasn't, wasn't really a conscious reason. It, it's just the wording that's chosen, okay? Um, I, I would think bell-to-bell would be a little more clear. Um, some of the exceptions that they had in the policies was talking about whether they're allowed to have it in the school building after the bell time, um, which is kind of clarified here for the middle and high school students, I think, somewhere. But I think bell-to-bell would, would be different. A- as a parent, I don't like it, but the, as a school board member, executive order i-is there. So I, I would support this, but we need to have a policy that's clear, and, and I don't think we're there yet.
Ms. Comer?
I just don't want to bust anybody's eardrums. Dr. Huskins and Dr. Hawks, maybe you can clarify this for me? So middle school and high school students have access to their Chromebooks throughout the day, all day. Is that pretty much on average? And then each student is assigned an email, correct? So parents can text message or email their child that will go to their Chromebook. So heaven forbid there's an emergency, they can still get a message to their child via that email form of communication, or call the office at the school, you know, like they did kind of back in my day, when I was a baby in the school system, when this wasn't a problem. But I just want parents to understand that not having the cellphone does not wipe away all communication with your child. You still have the ability to email them throughout the day, you know, which I would hope would not be a lot, because obviously you don't want to interrupt your child's school day. But that you still have the ability to email them, to contact them in the event of an emergency, or utilizing your administrators and the staff at the schools to make sure that those things get handled in a quickly manner. Am I correct with that statement? Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
And for those that don't know, I mean, I've got a middle school or in a high school, and their teachers don't allow them to be used in class now. So it's not a huge leap from what we're doing here. As we had a motion, we had a second. Any other discussion? Nope. All those in favor of adopting the mandate as presented, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say no.
What's going to be the effective date of this?
Does the mandate not say January?
It does, but the policy doesn't.
Would you like me to amend the motion to this being effective January?
January one, two thousand twenty-five.
Yes, that would be.
I think that would give everybody enough time to get the communication out.
Sorry.
I see principals nodding their heads.
January first of this year. Are you guys happy with that? Does that make you feel comfortable? Okay.
We need another whole other motion for that?
Do I? Okay.
Yes, please.
Okay, I would make a motion to approve the cellphone policy as it is written to be effective January first, two thousand twenty-five.
I second.
Second, all right. Discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carried. Okay, thank you. Mr. Davis, I think you steal up, sir.
Yes, sir. This is the information I'm presenting on behalf of the Division Wellness Committee and Mrs. Brizan, who runs this committee. Mrs. Comer's kind of shared some information already about red to bed. In order for Havis County Public Schools to be a part of this process, to collaborate with them, we had to change some wording in our regulation. This is the, what's in red are the changes in order for us to comply, in order to be a part of the Red to Bed organization. It says water is recognized as an essential nutrient to promote hydration, free, safe. Unflavored drinking water will be available to all students before, during, and after the school day, and throughout every school campus. School campus and school day are defined in the glossary. Havis County Public Schools will make drinking water available where school meals are served during meal times and in high-traffic areas. Water sources such as water fountains, water refill stations, or dispensers will be regularly maintained. Student will be allowed to carry water bottles filled with water. Teachers and staff will be encouraged to role-model healthy drinking behaviors. This change in the regulation was unanimously approved by the Wellness Committee. I'm just sharing this information as a regulation. No vote is needed. But we just want to make you aware of it, so we can take the next step, posting on our website, and then working collaboratively with Red to Bed.
Thank you. Think it's a great idea. Thanks. All right, next on our agenda is the Calendar Committee. I think we cycle a member on to that committee. One member, yes. Anybody want to volunteer? Ms. Comer? Anybody object to Ms. Comer being on the Calendar Committee? All right. Thank you, Ms. Comer, for volunteering. You've been on that committee.
Yeah, but it's changed over the years. I don't know what the current constitution is.
Who else is, I know one board member, but who else makes up that committee? Do you know, Ms. Rice? Ms. Miller? Sorry to put you on the spot. Thank you.
We're excited to have some of our students on there. Trying to work around, actually, we're tailoring it to your schedule.
Pursuant to Section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven of the Code of Virginia, I move that the board convene a closed meeting for the purpose of considering the following specific matters. A. Personnel, the appointment, resignation, and salaries of specific division employees as authorized by Section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A one. Disciplining specific students of the school division as authorized by Section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A two of the Code of Virginia. Contracts, discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, including interviews of bidders or offerers. Discussion of the terms or scope of such contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body as authorized by Section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A twenty-nine of the Code of Virginia.
Thank you. Any discussion on going into closed session? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, say no.